Okay, everybody, let us call the meeting order. First order of business is to announce the next meeting for this commission. We'll be here in this room Tuesday, December 16th, early in because of December. And with that, could we go to swear on the staff, please? All those from the staff, raise your right hands. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Board roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Whitman.
Here.
Ms. Maniachi.
Here.
Ms. Bartley.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Loversage.
Here.
Mr. Pongonas. Is Ms. Rittler here? Okay.
No.
And Mr. Slannick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Could you give us the overview of the hearing format, please?
Yes, so city staff, that's me, will present the staff report and application materials. The applicant will then come and sit at the presenter's table in the middle. They'll be sworn in and asked to present their materials. If we have any registered speakers, which I know we have one for the first and second cases, they will approach the podium, be sworn in, and provided three minutes to speak. And then the commissioners will discuss the case and ask any questions if needed. And I do want to point out on the agenda, item four, we do have a zone-in project update. The project manager is on his way. So what we'll do is we'll just proceed with the agenda, and then when he comes in, he will present whatever case follows. We'll take a pause from the cases and switch to that, and then go back to the cases.
Very good. I guess then we are ready for the first case.
I think we need to do the minutes for October.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. The minutes, may I have a motion to approve? Thank you. In a second, they're on the table. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say, I do? I do?
I do.
The minutes are approved, thank you. And our guest just walked in. If we want to go ahead and stay with the agenda here, Belkus.
Absolutely.
Louis, this is like old time sake here.
Sorry, you all right? I'm fine. No. I'm good, thank you. Yeah, thanks. It's nice to be back here. Good to see you all again. So, do you have the PowerPoint?
Could you just identify yourself?
Yes.
We all know, I don't know if you need to be sworn in.
Might as well.
I think so, yeah.
Would you swear, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. And please identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, Louis Taba, planner for the City of Columbus and the zone-in project manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you for the time to present here today. As you know, the City of Columbus is, we are working on modernizing our zoning code. That initiative is called Zone-In. Are we all pretty familiar with the Zone-In initiative? Okay. So our city zoning code is over 70 years old, and it's pretty dated. And it doesn't respond to the modern economy of what we're trying to do in Columbus, right? We deal with things such as cabarets in our zoning code and basket weaving. And those are all very noble professions, I'm sure. I haven't seen a cabaret in a while, but it doesn't deal with things such as data centers very well or distribution centers. And what do those zoning standards look like? So, what we're doing right now is, in phase one, it began in 2021, and it was finished in 2024, and it was about creating housing capacity along the corridors, right? And we looked at, the City of Columbus has 40 area plans, 40 different area plans. And in those 40 area plans, we have 200 distinct land use categories. So we have a whole bunch. And what those area plans said was, put density on the corridors. These area plans range from 1993 to 2018. And they said, the only common thread they had was densify the corridors, put units on the corridors. So in phase one, we looked at that policy basis, and we said, okay, we can put units on the corridors. And in order to enact a rezoning, you have to have a policy basis that allows you to enact that rezoning. That's part of Ohio state law, right? So we had a policy basis that said, put density on the corridors. And they went ahead and they looked at every area in the area plans on the 40 different maps. There's 40 different maps that guide development in Columbus. And they said, what areas say mixed-use land use recommendation? And then they put a border around it, and they said, that's phase one of Zone-In. And that's how they did phase one. It was harder than that. They, you know, there were some parcels here and there that they had to talk about. But that was the policy basis, and that's why phase one was just the corridors. And that's why they decided to do a phased-in approach, okay? And so what we're trying to do here is move forward with the Zone-In project, right? We still want to rezone the rest of the city. Does anybody know what percentage of the city was phase one? That's right. Ah, that's, so, phase one! That's, so, phase one was 4%. Just 4%. So we have a lot of work left to do. And then my predecessor retired, and then they gave me the job of figuring out what to do with the rest of the city. So, that's the background where we are right now. What we want to do is, phase two, we anticipate to have zoning adopted by 2026, and then we hope to have the whole city adopted by 2027. So this was phase one, equitable access. If you look at this map, you can see it was just on the corridors that had a mixed-use land use recommendation in policy, not in code, a mixed-use policy recommendation from those 40 area plans. And we used that to create mixed-use districts. So very successful, huge success. My predecessor really built the foundation for all the work we're doing, and there was no major opposition. So 140 miles of corridors, and this is where we think we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck on units, right? So they estimate about 88,000 units. So, small geographic area, big return. And as we keep doing the zone-in process, that's going to become inverted. The last phase, which will be the neighborhoods, will be a huge area, but probably less units. And this is what we got. We got six mixed-use zoning districts of a range of intensity from urban core all the way to urban general, right? So you can go up a limited height, no, I'm sorry, urban core up to 16 stories, and urban general, four stories, major, most height. So, as I said, we had a policy basis for phase one. We lack a policy basis for phase two. We don't have that nice, neat, mixed-use on the corridors. The City of Columbus has never had a comprehensive land use plan. We have never looked at the whole city and created a land use policy of where we want development to occur. And so before we can move forward with the rezoning, we have to continue to create a policy basis. Phase one didn't have to do that. They already had kind of a policy basis. But as you can see, we have 40 area plans, like I said, our newest is from 2018, seven years old, which is pretty old for a land use policy, and our oldest is 31 years old, 1994. And the reason for that is, the 1993 comprehensive plan, they set out this framework. They said, work with your neighborhoods to create neighborhood plans for each one. In theory, that's really nice. You get that, you get that small-scale engagement, you get to have a deep conversation with them every so odd years. The problem with that is, logistically, for a planning division like the City of Columbus, uploading, updating an area plan is about two-year process. We have 40 area plans, you do the math. That's why some of these are 31 years old. And so the negative is, we have area plans that are pretty modern, like a good one is Clintonville. Robust design guidelines, right? Updated land use policy, although it's getting pretty old now. You have other ones that are from 1993. Planning and the way the city thought they wanted to develop and grow was way different in 1993. The way our architects were designing things were quite different in 1993 than they are now. And so we have these dated plans that don't address what the community's aspirations are today, right? And when a variance or a rezoning comes through, Clintonville has very robust design guidelines that they can lean on to get a better project, to negotiate. While as other areas of the city, they don't. They just don't have those guidelines. So it's an inequitable process, and it's inefficient, right? So what we're trying to do is create a comprehensive growth strategy that prioritizes equitable access to housing, economic opportunity, and neighborhood vitality for Columbus residents. For the first time ever, we want to create one holistic land use plan for the City of Columbus. So for the first time ever, you'll look at one map, and you'll be able to see, where does the city prioritize industrial development? Where does the city prioritize mixed-use development? Where will the city support office, right? And it'll be accessible, it'll be easy to understand, it'll be comprehensible. You won't have to look at 40 area plans and 200 different land use categories. So what we're trying to do is, how many of you are familiar with C2P2? It doesn't apply to downtown, so it wouldn't have much. C2P2 are the Columbus citywide planning policies, CCPP, C2P2, right? So, this was an attempt in 2018 to create citywide land use policy, design guidelines. And what they did is they created design guidelines and land use categories for the city. But it was by area commission, commission had to opt in to choose to do it, right? And about, out of 21, well, out of 40 area plans, about 20 or so adopted them. The problem with that is, it didn't include a comprehensive citywide map. We were still going to go to each community and develop a map with each of them, and it just became an onerous project process. We still had the same problem. So what we want to do is, we want to do an amendment to C2P2, and we want to, as I said, we want to create, this will allow us to establish a citywide land use plan, that is the policy basis for the remaining phases of Zone-In. And we think that this can also provide a policy basis that can guide capital planning, investment, and budgeting. So if we have one map, it's easy for DPS to look and say, where do we need to do infrastructure improvements? Where do we see more growth happening in the city? Right now, we don't have that. We just have all these plans. They can look at industrial warehouse and say, okay, there's a greater demand for sewage capacity in these areas, because they need, it's more water-intensive, right? So how can we start to think about the city holistically for the first time? This is a major step, right? The way that this plan works is, it's a document, it includes a vision for growth, it includes guiding principles, three major guiding principles. Then we have the Columbus Land Use Plan, that's the newest element, that would be the citywide map. And then it'll have land use policies that give you guidance on what each of those categories are. So if the map says mixed-use 3, the land use policy sees mixed-use 3 as the most intense area of development in the city, it is the most supportive of intense buildings, et cetera. And then design guidelines as well, just general design guidelines for when people are coming through variances and rezonings. So if you don't meet the design guidelines of the code, we have additional design guidelines that can help us evaluate whether or not it meets. So, this is the map. This is the map that we currently have. We have been working with the community tirelessly since, probably going back to May on this map. We have engaged the community, we've done a lot of workshops, a lot of community engagement, we've had an online survey. And what you'll see there is a five-color map. Three colors, kind of the orange, the red, and the very light pinkish color, not that darker pink that you see in Pretty Strong, but very light pink color. Those are the mixed-use districts. And they go from mixed-use 1, which is four stories, mixed-use 2, which is seven stories, and mixed-use 3, which is unlimited height. You also see that blue color is industrial and warehouse, and that darker, I don't know, I'm bad with colors, pink, that darker pink color that you see kind of where Ohio State is, that's business and institutional campus. That's kind of like your university's offices, et cetera. This map was informed greatly by input from the community, and we can talk more about that if you have questions. So how did we get there? So let me just explain the process right now. So originally, the, in June, the city council adopted that map on the left, a focus area map, which was a resolution of support, okay? And what that map is, that map was the focus area, just said, these areas are under consideration. Then we had an initial land use map, which had three colors on it, business and institutional campus, mixed-use, industrial and warehouse. And now we're at that third map, the land use plan. So Belkus, if you hit the clicker real quick. So here you can see, this is what that map looked like. That first map, blue, just said, this is what's under consideration, this isn't what's under consideration. The second map showed us, the green was mixed-use, the blue was industrial warehouse, and the yellow was business and institutional campus. And what we did there, this is what the survey, and this is what we engaged the community on. We said, okay, do you support mixed-use in this area? And if it's so, at what intensity? Up to four stories, up to 10 stories, or higher? Then we did mixed-use, we did business and institutional campus, what height and intensity, and then industrial and warehouse, heavy or light industrial. That led to the land use plan map, which is where we are now. We then took that mixed-use, and we broke it up into three categories. Mixed-use 1, 2, and 3, based off of people's heights preferences. Industrial warehouse and business and institutional campus stay the same. That's where we are right now. With adoption of the citywide land growth strategy, the Columbus growth strategy, we then hope to use these, this policy foundation to create zoning districts. And that will be code. Policy is more aspirational, code is more, you know, you have to follow the guidelines. So, for example, what we have is mixed-use 2. We have a couple mixed-use districts created in the first phase that I showed earlier. We will then figure out, is that a community activity center, which is more suburban, or urban center, which is more urban? We'll determine if business and institutional campus is 1 or 2, based off intensity. So this is an ongoing process. So where I am right now with this group here is, I'm talking about the land use plan, but it'll set the zoning, the foundation for the zoning. So just to let you know, we had 3,200 online survey responses, we had workshops, we had over 26 pop-up events where we interacted with 2,078 individuals, where we explained the process to them. We had stakeholder meetings with key partners, institutions. We've done over 100 presentations at area commissions. We did an open house downtown. You walked by our information station down here with all the boards, that was where people could reserve one hour to talk to a planner about any of their concerns. We've had a 24-day public comment period, we've had newsletters, deliveries. And overall, our public input has been largely supportive with between 65 and 75% support. So largely supportive, we feel like we're on the right track. This is downtown, and the reason I'm here to talk to you today is because, as we've been doing this process, we weren't going to change the downtown zoning, because it's great. You guys do a great job, and you can do unlimited heights, lots of flexibility, we're good. But people kept saying, what about downtown? You're doing a comprehensive land use plan, citywide, you're not going to have downtown. And we just had this big donut empty in the middle. And so we thought, well, maybe we should assign a land use classification. And of course, if we're going to do a land use classification, it's going to be the most intense one, which is mixed-use 3, right? Mixed-use 3 is the most intense. This gives you a definition of mixed-use 3, eight-plus stories, you know, it includes a broad range of building types. My eyes aren't that good anymore. But anyways, it's basically very supportive of all kinds of uses, a mix of uses, offices, institutional, residential, et cetera, okay? And what I'm here for is a request to have the downtown commission create a recommendation of adoption for city council to adopt mixed-use 3 downtown. Now, this will have no effect on the downtown zoning, we're not changing the downtown district. This will have no effect on the purview of the downtown commission. We will not be changing the design guidelines that you use to review your proposals, and we have no plans to change the zoning. What it does is it just creates a land use policy on the map, right? At its most, you know, aspirational, it creates a land use policy for downtown, that at least in the future, we have a policy basis if we ever determine that we want to update the zoning code, or your group here decides to up, that we would like to make changes to the zoning code. At its most nuts and bolts, it's a color on a map that really has no effect on the work, the good work that you guys are doing here, right? And so our plan is, with support from this group, our plan is, we have a public hearing tomorrow to discuss the whole citywide growth strategy in council. We'll be submitting legislation to council on the 2nd. We'll go for first reading on the 8th, second reading on the 15th, and we hope to get this approved. It's a big step forward for planning in the City of Columbus, as I said, for all those reasons. And more importantly, it allows us to continue the work of updating our city's outdated zoning code. So with that, I'm just seeking that vote of a recommendation of support to adopt mixed-use 3, and I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Questions? What color are we voting for?
It'll be that, a nice, powerful red, yes.
Well, flash too, then?
Well, no, no.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I have a question about the design guidelines.
Yes.
So the ones that are described in the CGS document.
Yes.
That, that, is that sort of like a baseline for different districts? And so, for instance, like you spoke about, we have one in place that we would still be using.
Yeah.
So let's just take Clintonville, for example. You said they have pretty robust guidelines.
Right.
So would communities that have that in place go to those that are already in place for them?
Yeah, so early on, we were trying to determine, do we get rid of the existing area plans, or do we keep them? And we talked to the community, and lots of them want to keep their existing area plans. Some of them don't care, but some of them want. So what we decided was, okay, we'll allow the existing area plans to remain in place. The design guidelines from the Columbus growth strategy will work in tandem with them. In situations where the neighborhood plans, the area plans, can provide support to the Columbus growth strategy. Columbus growth strategy design guidelines are very baseline, you know, like parking should be to the rear of the structure. You know, garages should ideally face an alley, kind of general things like that. If a plan, for example, like the Clintonville plan says, garages should be architecturally compatible with the main building and have a rich roof pitch of, et cetera. Well, then in that case, when we're doing our reviews, and when the area commissions are doing their reviews, they can reference both. The Columbus growth strategy says parking garages should be in the rear of the structure and face an alley when appropriate, and the Clintonville area plan recommends that, you know, garages be compatible with the main structure. Therefore, we are recommending, or we are requesting that the proposals, garage be moved to the back of the building and be architecturally compatible. If they contradict each other, if, say, the Columbus growth strategy says garages should be to the rear of the structure, and an older plan says garages should be front-facing and have a driveway to the thing, when they contradict each other, then the Columbus growth strategy will take precedent. The design guidelines in the Columbus growth strategy, just like all of the design guidelines in our area code right now, are for when people want to vary from the code, right? So say someone wants to do a rezoning, or they want to do a variance. We use those design guidelines to say, okay, you're not following the code, you want a rezoning, let's see if we can support that rezoning. And then we looked at our land use map, and we'll see, okay, it's an appropriate land use, we can support it. And then we'll say, okay, let's look at what this design of this building is. You don't want to have a four-foot setback from your property line, which is what code says you have to do. So what does our design guideline say? Well, it might say that, you know, buildings should be more or less have, you know, the side of the building might be, should be in line. And so then we can rely on that to say, okay. So that's how this works. There are almost no rezonings or variances downtown. I think there's been one.
Yeah.
The parking lot over here, in like 20 years. So for downtown, your guidelines are so flexible, and there's so little need for variances or rezonings, that it really has very little practical implication. However, if, for example, this parking lot came through, and they, the design guidelines say, you know, you should have screening around the side of that, we could use that in our review to council.
Yeah, and, and basically, our guidelines, the way we have them today, are very compatible with what you've, your new set of guidelines, really, are they not?
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's more, what we're trying to do here is create more flexibility in uses.
So they're asking for us to make a recommendation to council here. I'd like to see if there are any more questions. And then I, frankly, we reviewed this with Louis and Belkus earlier, Bob and Gina and I, and I don't see any problem with it. I think what it does is help these folks come up with some consistency here, in the sense that the entire city then falls under this, this zoning plan here. And we're where we want to be, we're the, what do we call this, the mixed-use 3 category.
Correct.
Anyway, so I, and there's no, I don't, I don't think, and we asked this question a couple times, there is no conflict with what we're doing right now, is that correct?
That's correct. I would tell you, if there wasn't, if there was, we'd want to resolve that before doing this, there's really no.
And obviously, Louis, having been our staff person here before, Belkus arrived, is obviously totally and absolutely familiar with downtown. So, any thoughts, any questions? Let's do questions, anybody? Tony, or anybody? Jeff, or, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we recommend, what are we recommending? The land use plan, mixed-use 3 for downtown.
Correct. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm concerned we're making this too easy for you here, Louis.
That's good.
Any other questions or comments?
One question.
Okay.
So, you know, you've been looking at this very comprehensively, and do you have any advice for us, or any insights? You know, and the three goals you have are healthy and complete communities, guiding growth and sustainable development and high-quality design.
Yes.
So, do you just have any insights for us as commissioners, or any takeaways that you feel we should be thinking about as, as you've studied this, and things that you think are working well downtown, or things that, like, you know, we should just be thinking about?
No, I mean.
We look at, as we look at the development and approve applications?
No, I mean, I think, if anything, we're kind of moving more towards kind of what's downtown, right? So downtown, the original idea was, let's allow a lot of flexibility in uses, but then the downtown commission will make sure it looks robust, it looks strong and architecturally compatible. And so what we're trying to do is, you know, in the 1950s and 60s, it was, the idea was Euclidean zoning, residential here, commercial here, office here. What we're saying is that was too strict. Let's allow mixing of uses, but let's put in the code design guidelines that are robust enough to make sure they don't, that they're compatible. So that's what we're trying to do. I think that, you know, there's really nothing I think the downtown commission needs to change. You have unlimited height, you have zero parking requirements, which is what we're trying to do, not unlimited height all over the city, but allow greater height and remove a lot of the parking restrictions in the city. So, you know, as you're doing your reviews, just as always, Belkus will give you the proper guiding, guidelines and everything, and just, you know, continue to make the city walkable and more vibrant, yeah, mixed-use.
Thanks.
Very good. Any other questions? Any comments? Anything from the audience? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Miss working here.
Felkus.
Yes.
Continue to get education credits for this.
I think so. That's right.
I think one, yeah. All right, so the next applica, or the first application will be tabled applications from last month. So we're starting with 164 North Grant Avenue, and then also 149 Cleveland Avenue, opportunity point 1 and 2. And if I may, I, we could just kind of bundle them together and talk about them at once, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Oh, let me go. Okay, here we go. Yeah. So, 164 North Grant Avenue is located at the southeast corner of East Spring Street and North Grant Avenue, just west of Columbus State Community College. This site consists of three parcels and currently holds a surface parking lot and one-story commercial warehouse building built in 1949. The applicant is seeking commission approval to demolish the existing building and construct a five-story, 82-unit affordable housing development. This site will also include six surface parking spaces, a playground, a picnic area, building materials including fiber cement siding, fiber cement panels, vinyl windows, and brick veneer. And the graphics shown are representative placeholders, and we're part of a separate future application. The other site, which I'll also read about, this is 149 Cleveland Avenue, and this is located at the northwest corner of East Long Street and Cleveland Avenue, just west of Columbus State Community College. The applicant is seeking commission approval to demolish the existing buildings and construct a five story, 104 unit housing development. And that will have 20 student units and 84 affordable units with five surface parking spaces, a playground and a picnic area. Building materials also include fiber cement siding, fiber cement panels and brick veneer. And the graphics shown in this one are also representative placeholders and will be part of a separate future application. For both of these applications, the applicant was last before the commission for a conceptual review in October 2025, where the commission recommended bringing additional drawings for a complete application and for the drawings to be consistent with one another. Commissioners also recommended leaving sections of the brick that go up to three stories to explore decorative paving treatments for the interior parking areas and to include good screening of the dumpster and ground mechanicals. They're also supportive of the use of the spicy mustard color as it brings warmth and color to the building facades. In response for both applications, the applicant included additional drawings, material details in their application package, maintained the three story sections of exterior brick, updated the refuse and ground mechanical enclosures to brick with vinyl gates and included a mix of site paving treatments. And the submitted materials for both applications include a site plan, context images, land survey, demolition plan, site plan, utility plan, landscape plan and details, site details, lighting details, material details, elevations, floor plans, wall sections, exterior details, renderings, a HABSLITE report for the circa 1900 structure and a state historic preservation office or SHIPO letter. I'll let the applicant go through their materials in the package since it's quite robust. But after review, the downtown district code requires a certificate of appropriateness for demolitions and that a replacement use be reviewed and approved by the downtown commission. Downtown design guidelines state that the commission will need to consider if the demolition will allow for new development in which the commission's opinion is of greater significance to the character of the surrounding area. And the guidelines recommend that new construction be influenced by the pattern of nearby contributing buildings using high quality durable materials. And they also call for complimentary site landscaping, that surface parking be located to the rear of the primary structure with alley access and that bike parking be included. Both proposals are consistent with these downtown design guidelines and the commission will need to consider if the demolitions will allow for new development in which, in the commission's opinion, is of greater significance to the character of surrounding area and that applies for both applications. Thank you.
Very good. Could the applicants come up, please? Good morning. Could you grab another chair if you'd like to be three of you? Okay. Well, then if anybody wants to testify, would you raise your right hands? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thanks very much. Could you identify yourselves for the record then, please?
Jonathan McKay with Wada Cooper Companies. And then this is Cynthia Hayes.
Architect.
Now we've all.
Sorry. And then we've also got with us Mark Schreiber, the landscape architect. And then.
Zach Woodruff with Columbus State Community College and Columbus State Community Partners.
Okay, and one more. Great. Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we take a look at where we are? And we met with you, was it last month, I guess? And let's kind of spend some time focusing on what maybe the changes are from what you had last time, please. Go ahead. Thanks.
Sure. So in our package, what we've done here is shown some different viewpoints down the different viewpoints of the building. Can you go specifically to the rendering, Spelkis? I think that'll be the most helpful here.
That's better. Oh my God.
Yeah, so starting on the first page here, a couple of things that we've done based on the feedback from the commission here is that we've taken the brick up. It's a little bit hard to see here, but there was less brick that was on the third floor. We've taken it up at multiple points at the building. In addition to the alley there, that's currently Kelly Alley, that's going to be transferred as part of the development. We've given some different paving techniques. So we've got some asphalt going down the alley, but now there's concrete now in terms of the parking. Can you go to the next slide, please?
Yeah.
And then I believe Cynthia, do you want to talk about the dumpster at all in terms of the?
So we do have brick going up to six foot high with cast concrete cap around all the enclosures. That's the generator, the transformers and the trash enclosure. And then the gates will match the gray, so they'll kind of disappear. And then on this side, we don't have enough planting space, but for the most part, we put planting around or Mark put planting around as much as possible.
And then can you go specifically to the photo to the neighbor? I want to make sure that the commission sees the distance between, and I believe it, I believe it's 10 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
We paid special attention to make sure there was a buffer between the existing building and then where the development will be.
Show us that picture if you can. Is that?
Two or three back, I believe.
Okay.
There's two of them. There's one from the street right there. And then there's one from the other side as well.
Yeah, I think that's the better one that you can tell.
So so the adjacent property at the point of the connection there of the contiguous lot line is a parking lot? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, go to the other one.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's obviously more than 10 feet. So your property line is where it's landscaped. Is that correct?
Well, that.
And is there an empty space then?
Piece of building behind it is hers as well.
Oh, I see the one. Okay, fine. But at the, where it touches, what is that, Grand Avenue? There's a parking area there, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Are there anything else you want to show us on any? How about landscaping? You had mentioned landscaping.
Yeah, do you want to go back to the, there's a good photo that includes all the different landscaping that we're going to be including. And we have Mark Schreiber here as well, in case there are any.
In other words, what I just want to understand is what kind of, how it's different than what you brought into us a month ago?
Can we just, can we pause there just for one second? Can you go back?
Yeah. Sorry, there's a lag.
Yeah, I just want to understand that we understand the scope of the landscape. So are you re-landscaping the parking lot?
There we go. Hold there, Belkus, thank you.
No. No, we are not.
No. No.
Yeah, that came up last time.
Okay. I just, yeah. So it's all, it's all labeled like it's fine. It's not a big deal, but it's labeled like it's new material. It's, it's not.
So the right hand side of Cleveland Avenue that we're looking at is existing. Okay. And not, will not be changed. Okay, you're not, that's not part of your program. Okay.
Let me go. One more here.
Are there questions, comments from anybody?
Yeah, I have one.
Yep, Tony.
So the alley that between Spring and Long goes southbound, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so we have the dumpster entryways that seem to be oriented the wrong way. If you're going to have a truck come.
Truck get up to it.
Yeah, and swing around, grab them, you know, grab the dumpster stuff, pour it in. And then they're going to have to do a pretty incredible movement to back out of it, to get back to the alley. Like, why did you orient it that way?
I think the civil engineer is studying that and we will change it so that the dumpsters will be.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, it's like completely not right.
From your standpoint, you're going to want something that works. Now, those guys, those dumpster guys are magicians. Okay. They're fainting operate. But still.
The point is, how does the truck load, right, Tony? That's what you're getting at. And so is it a front load, a back load or a side load?
Probably a front load and we'll have the arrows changed graphically.
Right, so. If it's a front load.
So if it's a front load, it probably needs an adjustment, right? And I think maybe, Tony, is it okay if we just let them reverse the angle of this without having to come back, right? That's pretty simple.
But I think it changes the, I think it changes the orientation of the plant material and this, I think it changes a lot as it relates to the site plan.
Yeah, but does it change the spirit of it if it's sort of just orienting, like rotating 90 degrees?
I don't know.
Yeah.
May I address that a little? The space is the same, Tony. When that flips around, planting materials will flip in the same space. It's very limited. So the whole idea is to screen those, at least create a small inner open space between the building and the dumpsters. So it's merely a directional switch from what it showed there.
Yeah, I feel like in my mind, when you're coming for an approval, I mean, it should be oriented the right way, right? I mean, it seems like a.
The alley should go the other way.
I mean, it's a basic, this is a, that's basic.
Well, I would say that if we get to the point where we want to approve this, what I would suggest, if that's an impediment to somebody to say yes, we would ask you to, we could talk about approving this and ask you to come back and show us how you're going to handle dumpsters, if that would be acceptable to you. So are there other questions then? Other comments? Trudy, now Sonia. Okay, Jana?
Yeah, I had two small things. So I appreciate that you looked at the paving and now you're using the concrete. And can you describe for the concrete what that looks like? Is that just the same type of concrete you would see on a standard sidewalk? Or are you thinking of a special finish with a tint? I didn't really see that described in the package.
It would be a standard white color that's same as the sidewalk. And most of it is accessible parking. So there'll be, of course, the markings for noting that those are accessible spaces. And then we just wanted to reduce the amount of asphalt. And so that was the, the big effort there was to reduce it to the 13, 14 feet that we needed for the.
Okay. And then the other question is you have, I think, two areas or at least one we see on the site plan there a little bit to the north where you have the mechanical equipment enclosed. And I'm wondering if you have any concerns about, you know, residents that look down onto the site? If they will see that a lot? If there's a way, I don't know, when you work with the equipment company to have it painted a certain color? Just something to camouflage it a little bit? Or if typically this equipment might be able to have some roofing over it? Like, I'm really not quite sure what the options would be, but maybe just consider how that might be handled because that looks like a large enclosure and it will be really visible from the, from the apartments.
Thank you for that comment. There may be a way, the generator has an enclosure that goes over it and we can look into see if there's options there for the, the two generators, one for each property. The transformers are the normal green that AEP and Columbus Power will provide. And then the planting around it, you know, as it matures, you know, we do have plantings closer to the building that will maybe help to, to screen those views.
And then my last.
A six foot brick wall is a great.
Then my last question is on the site, are you using any of the green, green techniques, like green building techniques or green techniques for, you know, various materials?
Silver buildings.
Really? Great.
That's our standard.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anything from the audience? Would you like to come up, please? Would you, if you'd go to the podium? And would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Debbie Richards and I am one of the owners of the historic property adjacent to this development.
Hey, can you speak into the microphone, please, so that we can hear you?
Is this better?
That's better. Thanks. And would you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I had submitted an email. I don't know if you.
Okay, can you speak up? I'm sorry, I am having a hard time.
I have submitted an email yesterday that Belkus told me she would share with all of you. I don't know if you had time to read that. But my concern is when I first moved into the property, at some point, Columbus State had a 10 year vision map that they had put online that showed my home gone and a pavilion with picnic tables. And I had reached out to Columbus State to ask why I was gone. And I believe it was Terry Garrett at the time, who was retired, who met with me, toured my home and said to me, Debbie, I want to assure you, we're not the 800 pound gorilla in your backyard that's going to show up at your front door with a bulldozer. And yet, here we are. The 800 pound gorilla is showing up at my garage with a bulldozer. This is a photo of the roof of my garage, that single story portion of my home and the wall that Columbus State is going to demolish. And they are asking you for approval to tear down a building that is three inches away from my home. My husband, who is immunocompromised and works from home, has his office right there. A stray cinder block going through the roof could actually kill my husband. I have valid concerns about the demolition. And I invited Zach to meet with me and tour my home after the last meeting. And he graciously accepted and came and toured my home and assured me that he was not just paying lip service, but that was here to have a meaningful, good faith dialogue with me. And so I sent an email with my concerns per his request to Columbus State and have not yet received a response. And so I would ask respectfully that the commission defer approving any demolition or anything until Columbus State and I have an opportunity to discuss and address my concerns and negotiate a solution that's a win for both parties. I'm sure Columbus State doesn't want to kill my husband. I'm sure Columbus State doesn't want to collapse part of my residence. I'm sure Columbus State doesn't want to destroy my collection of very fragile valuable glassware. I'm sure Columbus State doesn't want anything bad to happen. But unanticipated events happen during construction all the time. And my example was the horror at Kelton House. When I saw that, I said, oh my God, that could be my house. The water lines, the sewer lines, the gas lines, everything in this part of downtown is ancient and decrepit. What if the water, what if I have no water? What if I have no gas? What if I have no electricity for a day, for a week, for a month? What, how can we negotiate an emergency solution before the problem happens and hopefully never have to use it? It's better to be, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And so I outlined specifically what my concerns were. I don't know if you got to read that, if you want me to review them. But I can tell you that essentially. Here's a photo of the destruction at Kelton House. And I don't want to be the next one to have this issue. This was from some kind of gas leaks causing a fire and explosion at Kelton House, which is just down the block because there was some work going on. And when Columbus State was drilling core samples on August 18th of 2025, my entire building was shaking. My glassware was clinging and jingling. I was like, oh my God, this is an earthquake. I went outside to see what was happening. And it was the result of just small core samples being drilled across the alley in where opportunity point phase two would be located. So that became a concern for me. Additionally, I'd like to discuss the fire rating of the south facade because it is my belief as a licensed Realtor that the best and highest use of my property is future development going upward, preserving the historic facade as others have done in Columbus, which I think is a fantastic way to respect history and still allow new development. These are, there are two others that I have in the short north. And Edwards Companies did it on Broad Street. And I don't want to be in a position where I can't sell to someone in the future who wants to develop upward because of the lack of fire rating that Columbus State will have on their south facade. So there are a lot of issues that I feel Columbus State and I need to sit down and talk about. And I can make myself available anytime. And as I did, I reached out and I am waiting patiently for a response, but I ask that you not approve anything until we can have that conversation.
We have a three minute limit on speakers.
That's my limit.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Yeah, a little bit, but that's fine. No problem about that.
You know, I, none of you are ever in a position of having your neighbor try to tear down their building, which is three inches away from you without telling you how they're going to protect you.
Okay. Well, and I, we are a design review entity here. So we're going to pretty much confine ourselves to that. I, if you folks want to work out things with the neighbors, that's wonderful. So we're going to pretty much confine ourselves to that. I, if you folks want to work out things with the neighbors, that's wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the? Anybody else in the audience? Thoughts?
I just commented, whatever the fire rating issue, that's covered by the building code.
Building code, absolutely.
But what they do will meet the code.
Yeah.
But the code is based on what's currently existed, not if my building chooses.
Well, but you, if you put a building up, you're going to be subject to the building codes at that moment, too. And you're going to also have to do construction and, you know, the all of, or you or whoever does that. And they will all have to deal with a set of, of conditions, you know, the
We have lots of buildings downtown that are on the lot line.
I just had one question about what you said. You said there was a portion of your building or something on your property that was being demolished? And I'm not quite sure what that is.
Can we just get the record just thorough? Sorry, I have too much
She was talking about the wall of the adjacent building that's on Columbus State property. It's very close to her
In their ten foot separation?
No, in the new build, in the new design, yes. The existing building.
I see it right here. Yes. Oh, that white building on the left goes up against her garage.
This wall here?
Can we clarify one issue here? Is there any demolition being done on your property? On your property? Just, I just want to get the record straight. No. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, if they damage her building, that's between them. So. Yeah, okay.
Got a good contract.
Any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the group then, please?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, the motion is on the floor then. I'm going to go right back again. Any questions? Comments?
Do we want to deal with the dumpster issue?
Do we want to deal with the dumpster issue? Tony wants to, do you want them to come back on that? And show us how they do it? And do we want to prove it with that as a carve out?
Approve that with a carve out.
Okay, are you willing to modify that motion then? Was that yours, Jeff?
Yeah.
Carve out for staff approval?
Yeah, let's, yeah. And if, if you have any questions about
I'm gonna call Tony.
Lays out, we can look at.
Okay.
Motion to approve with a staff approval on the final orientation of the dumpsters based on trash collection and whatnot.
An alley orientation. Yeah.
And, and then the landscaping would be adjusted to accommodate whatever.
That's right.
Does that work for you?
Works for me. Great.
Okay. So, and is there a, I guess there's a, the second is okay with that, Sonia? Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I appreciate the design changes that you made in response to our comments.
It's, it's better. It just feels better.
Will you certify the building as lead silver or will you?
I'd
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I had just want also on that, I see you changed the window to black from the white. And I think that's a good choice.
One other change is that we went from vinyl to fiberglass.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you speak up again?
The thing we did was we went from vinyl from the first to fiberglass.
Yeah, that's better, too.
Yes.
Okay, well, we appreciate you doing some of these items. I think they're important and I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? No, please. Okay, that motion carries.
Did we approve both then?
So that's Opportunity Point One. Would you?
Well, I thought we were reviewing him as a package.
Well, since that motion has the condition on it, do you want that same to apply?
Apply to both of them? Oh, it's a common, isn't that a common kind of alleyway and?
Yeah.
How, how would you like us to do it? So it works for you?
A separate motion and a, and
For, for the other project?
For the next one.
Okay, I'll make the second emotion.
Okay, and is there a second motion?
I've got a lot of emotions.
With the same, with the same condition then, right, for dumpster?
Okay. So I have a motion from Mr. Pongonas.
That's right.
Okay, questions, comments? Jana?
The HABs report for the building, that is already
We do have that and that is a part of the submitted application package.
Didn't come to us, did it?
Yes, it's a part of the package in this PDF.
And there was also a ship bill letter, no impact.
I saw the ship bill letter, yeah.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Just one more thing. I know this isn't, you know, what we do, but just in terms of that lady's concern, do you feel that that's something you can talk to her and work out? Or direct her, who would be somebody that she could talk to and understand more about the process?
Yeah, we've, we've currently met, it was last Friday and are reviewing her concerns. So we will be providing a formal response to her.
And keeping her in the loop and assuring her that it's going to be okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments, anything from the audience? All those in favor of approval of the
Need a second.
Oh, I thought, no, Sonia.
Oh, we have, okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, that HABs report is not in the submittal.
Is it in? Now, there are two submittals, you understand. Is it in one of them and not the other?
As it was maybe.
Because it's only on one of the properties.
Okay. Oh, no, Adobe, don't do this to me.
Well, would you just send it to me?
Yeah, absolutely.
You need to, does that affect your? Okay. So any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make sure to send it to you, Bob.
Okay. Why don't you just, while you're doing it, Belkus, send it to everybody?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Then we've gotten it. Thanks so much. Next case, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that about the dumpster?
Mm hmm.
He's not right.
And I'm glad there'll be a way to reset it again and make sure it works.
Yeah, yeah.
That's actually just a single mistake.
Looks like there's enough room that they can
Yeah, they can flip it, but at the same time, I want to make a point.
You don't know how it's going to affect things and it might be something
Wait, let me come in. Then, then that guy is doing another crazy turn to get out of there.
Okay.
And then once it's done, it's
Back on track here. So the next case is for three twenty two Mount Vernon Avenue for graphics. Three twenty two Mount Vernon Avenue is located at the corner of Mount Vernon Avenue and North Sixth Street and is home to Ballet Met. The applicant is seeking commission approval to install eighteen signs total as follows. Two non-illuminated stud mounted PVC channel letter entrance wall signs on the east and west elevations. Two seventy seven by thirteen foot and a hundred and forty five by eighteen foot painted large format mural style wall signs on the east and west elevations. And the east elevation wall sign is the approvals for the location only and then the final content is yet to be determined. Four ten foot by twelve foot perforated mesh marketing banner wall signs on the north, inner north and south elevations. And this approval is also for the location only and final content is yet to be determined. And then ten three foot by eight foot outdoor fabric marketing banner flag signs on the inner north, inner south, south and west elevations. Approval is for location only and the final content is yet to be determined. The ballerina statue on page six is representative only and is not included in this application. And submitted materials include a site plan, elevations, mockup photos and sign details. So if we look at their package here, first we have the site plan. So you can see the different signs represented by these different colors and when they're, and where they're located on the building facade. So in that orange, we have those large format mural style type wall signs that are painted. The pink are just those traditional aluminum channel letter signs above the main entrances. And then the blue signs are a mix of the marketing banner signs, which are more like rectangular, larger scale. And then a mix of those little like flag style signs, which will be mounted to the facade. So here you can see one of the large format signs, the Ballet Met sign. And then one of the channel letter signs over the entrance on this elevation. Next, these are examples of the marketing banner signs. So the applicant intends on switching these out as new performances approach to market them. And that's why the final content's yet to be determined. Down here, you see another one of those larger market, marketing banner type style signs. And then these smaller ones, the perforated mesh signs will be along the building facade. And there's more examples of those here. And then here you can see another larger style mural. Again, the content's yet to be determined. But it, it looks like it will be commercial copy.
There you go. Looks like it'll work.
It'll be commercial copy, so it's going to be painted reflecting what's going on inside. So if they're ballerinas, this is Ballet Met, this is technically advertising instead of art.
So does that mean we can have a beer commercial on there or?
No. So if it, if it were, you know, ice cream cones, that's art because it's not related to what's going on inside of the building. But since these are ballerinas and this is a ballet building, then it's considered commercial copy or advertising. So it's just the difference between art versus
And in the application, are they proposing to relate it to the?
That's ridiculous.
Building and zoning services and how their graphics code is written.
Belkus.
We are the graphics code.
We are. Yes, yes, there is a graphics section, but in the definition section of the overall zoning code, they have definitions for what consists of art versus what consists of graphics. And graphics is anything related to what's going on to the inside, the built, the use of the building. So if you have an ice cream shop and you want to paint a large ice cream cone on the side of your wall, that is a sign because you're advertising what's going on inside. If you do ballet and you paint a big ballerina on the side, that's a sign.
It is.
So that's how the code is written.
Then again, then?
So this large sign, it looks like if it, you know, the content's yet to be determined, but we're reviewing it as a sign versus art.
A sign, okay.
Yeah, that's why it's here is what I'm saying. If it were a strictly art mural, it wouldn't have to come before y'all. And then here's more details on those channel letter signs that will go above those two entrances of the connector.
Okay.
So that's the scope of that. And then after the analysis states that building should not be dominated by graphics and that signage should not obscure significant architectural elements. Further, they state that signs may be illuminated. And they also recommend wall signs that are proportional to the building to which they are attached and that banner signs that advertise a development or product are discouraged. So the proposal is semi-consistent with the downtown design guidelines. And staff encourages the commission to discuss the number of banners and how some banners cover areas of decorative masonry. Thank you.
Very good. Could the applicants come up and join us, please? Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Andy English, Plant Studios, and I'm the applicant on the application.
Okay.
Ed Rinaldi with Hanlon Rinaldi Construction, representing Ballet Met.
Great. Could you raise your right hands? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Okay, do you want to just? I guess walk us through this. We've, Belkus has laid it out pretty well.
So the, if you guys haven't been over there in the past year, eighteen months, they completed a project called the Infill Project, or you also hear the name, the Connector. And that added a lot to this site. If you guys knew the site before, it was basically a brick alleyway with service dock along North Sixth Street. The Connector kind of added a whole new kind of twist to the site in that it gave us sort of a center focus point, which was what it was designed to do. A place that they could hold events and just, you know, connect those two buildings, the warehouse to the north. And then the, sort of the main area where they teach, teach the ballet. So what it did was it all of a sudden started to energize North Sixth Street. And part of the project, we put a courtyard that is both ADA ingress egress, as well as a place for, you know, in between classes or if they're holding event that people can go outside and utilize. After the Infill Project was completed, we started to look and say, wow, these facades really got big and they really got bland. So we started to look at how could we energize and just sort of draw attention to the entrances, the entrance points, especially that North Sixth Street. Because people are starting to use that as a drop off point. But if you've been down North Sixth Street, it's a little bit intimidating right now. So we kind of looked at how do we energize? The conditions on the street aren't great. They're basically sidewalk over to vertical building. So that's the reason why we sort of keyed in on doing building banners. And then the other thing that Ballet Met wanted to do was there's a lot of times during the year that they have people coming and going, as well as parents, that sort of thing dropping off. And they just wanted the ability to advertise future events, future things that they're going to be doing. And that's what the banners and the reason why they're interchanging. A lot of the signs that you'll see are going to be especially this, this one. They're sort of tucked behind. They're not front and center on the right of way. I would say really the only one on Mount Vernon Avenue and actually sign number four. That's on page two, Belkus. Yeah, the, the one right there, the, that was actually an overhead garage that Hanlon Rinaldi turned into to make it look more consistent with the facade. And we kind of looked at it and say, wow, that'd be a good place for the public to know kind of what's going on. You know, with what's, everything's that. The mural number seventeen, again, just kind of energizing North Sixth Street. It was an idea, final artwork or advertisement. I mean, if we put ice cream cones in the ballerina's hands, maybe we get over the the advertising what's in. But so that's really it. That's the, the whole goal is to energize, add a little more attention to what Ballet Met is. They're a national oh, and then the last piece, sorry, eighteen and nineteen. Susan Gerlock Douglas, she is a, she's been a longtime supporter of Ballet Met. Ballet Met wants to do, recognize her. She probably isn't crazy. So what we also did was did white and Belkus had said it was aluminum.
PVC.
A channel letters. They're actually PVC and they're just going to be mounted, but we did white on aluminum to not have them pop. We, you know, it's sort of, it's there, but we wanted to kind of downplay the, that.
So you could get her to say, okay?
Yeah, basically.
And those are not lit then?
No.
Really?
No, they're not.
It looked like
Internally lit. There are, there are, there are lights, but they shine down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The big wall panel on the sixth street there, is that intended, is that a? You know, a lot of this stuff is kind of fairly almost, it can be temporary. I mean, it's, it's banners and stuff like that out in front. I suppose you're not going to change them necessarily, but over time, they're going to want, need to be changed.
Yeah.
And or freshened or whatever. Is that a semi-permanent thing that you see there? I mean?
Painted.
And is, oh, and is the idea that it has, it's not an advertising panel then, right?
No, it was just, it was more about, I, I would term it more art than it would. And again, if it helps the commission, we just wanted to identify it as a place to but again, the final is something that we could work with staff, you guys on. When they get to it, we wanted to make sure it was part of the package, but you understood the overall.
I, I had a couple of thoughts.
Okay, go ahead.
Saying, so when you look at this picture here on the left and the right, it looks also on your plan, it looks like you have a lot of banners on the right, on the right photograph.
Yeah.
To the north of what's now the connector. And that looks like that's probably an older photo. And I think where you do have that northern warehouse, I don't really know if you need the, the, if you're going to have a nice painted mural, you might not need those banners coming out, you know, the ones that are, you know, sticking out.
Yep.
And just have those banners stop where you, where you show it on the old original building on the west facade.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point. And we weren't really sure where that mural was going to go. And again, you know, so if we wanted to move the mural down to allow those banners, but it also was meant the banners were because again, when you look down North Sixth Street, you might not see the mural, but you will see the banner down to kind of emphasize that entrance off.
That's a, that's a long space along there.
It is. It really is.
My overall reaction, the first time I looked at it and I saw the little locations here, the first thing was it's this is way too much. These guys are nuts. And then as I looked at it, though, these, this is, there are big, long spaces there.
Yeah.
And I think it totally energizes this building. I mean, you've got this concrete block chunk. And I think it totally energizes this building. I mean, you've got this concrete block chunk here in the back that basically is, was a warehouse, not, not anymore. It was a warehouse, okay? This connector is fantastic. That wall there on, that's the east side of the building, that screams out for that kind of signage. And I think it's frankly very elegant and I think it just energizes. If this were an office building, you wouldn't want to put, you know, Pepsi fifty signs of it around there, but it's kind of an art facility. I think it's fun. I think it's great.
I do too.
I mean, it's just energy and I like the banners on there and the big wall graphic on the west side there. So at any rate, that's my thought of it. And I think this, the way Susan, you know, the Susan Douglas connector thing there, I think that looks, I think that looks great. And by the way, it is very subtle. I mean, um, so at any rate, that's my thought on the thing, my two cents.
I think that's a good point now that I think, but I guess it all depends on like what the mural is going to be, the painted mural will be there. So I can, now I see the point that Steve and Bob are making that even if you do have the, the mural, the whole length, that maybe the banners there as well as you show are okay. So I guess it might just be looking at what, what, how much expanse you're using and how many you think, but maybe just adjusting it as you develop it more.
Yeah, and, and the reason why we went three and three, you know, it's a longer, that was a longer stretch. So we thought that three on either side would be better where on Mount Vernon, we just did two and two to just kind of have it.
It's a building much more inviting than it is currently.
Yeah.
I agree.
Asset building. You don't really know unless you know. It is valuable.
Right, yeah.
This really is, you have set things for his vibe on C and it engages people to come in.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
When you think about who your audience is and where they're coming from, even think it's a, a safety kind of thing that people feel a little more, a little safer. They know what it is, where they're going, and the signage is there as well as the, the mural. Because I said, right now, that is an intimidating building if you do not know what it is.
Especially with the, uh, all the semi-trucks on the other side of the street and the fences, not a friendly.
Yeah.
Uh, look.
No, this is a big, I think, I think this is a big, big, large plus.
I think it's a small investment for a huge return.
I, I couldn't agree more. And, you know, with respect to the, respecting the old building, that was, that was a, a truck door there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's not as though you're covering up or, um, you, you know, ancient masonry that was there.
Well, that's a great, it's a great improvement. Get rid of the garage door.
Yeah.
Is the Mount Vernon, um, I agree, support. Is the Mount Vernon frontage functionally the, is the back of the building? Or do, do you, do, is that still an entry?
That's the front door. That is the.
So it's still functionally an entry even with the connector?
Yeah, what, what happens is the parking lot across the street, some people will park or drop off at the parking and then the kids, it's more for the kids coming over. You're still coming in, like anytime I've gone over the, and we always talk about like the first time visitor going. Usually you're parking in the parking lot in the back and coming in the backside, but they still do, um, the front entrance is, is more for staff and more for students.
And so, yeah, thank you for that. And it, it seems to me to be the primary facade of the building, right? That being the most dominant treat. So, so is the only sign then for that bill, forget the banner for a second. Is the sign for the facility just the canopy?
That's the only.
Is that well lit? I'm wondering if you want to tweak the lighting on that a little bit too?
Canopy?
Yeah, and that front door. So it really, I, I mean, I, I got to admit, I haven't been by there particularly at night for a while.
Well, the, the other part that we were going to put as part of this application, um, that we removed it just because there was, it was just too.
Too much for us, too much for us to handle at one time?
So there's a flagpole that sits at the peak and it is a, I mean, you could put a giant flag. So one of the ideas that we had is can we make that into a sculptural element that, you know, then we could illuminate it? And that would be art. Thank you for doing that. We had some ideas on it, but we really never flushed them out. Um, and maybe something we come back and get your input on. But, um, yeah, it's not going nowhere, that flagpole. And we just thought instead of putting a flag, you know, do we do something more sculptural on it? That really kind of plays the artistic and the performance aspect of Ballet Met.
Well, I don't know what the solution is, but I would support being bold along this stretch of roadway.
Absolutely.
Don't want to beat up on this amazing historic building, but, um, I think Trudy made a lot of great comments. Just the fact that it's activated, energized with art makes the neighborhood feel safe, vibrant and cared for. And I think, you know, letting folks know that this is a, a, a art landmark downtown is really great. So anyway, I'd support all of it. It's awesome.
Right, thank you.
I had one more comment about your banners that are, you know, on the wall. And I'm wondering, like, I understand that they're temporary and they're going to be changed out. But I'm wondering if, let's say, the one that's on Mount Vernon and maybe the one that's on the west facade, where they seem a little bit more formal in the sense that they're more of the, like, design, an important design element of the building, then maybe there's a way to create, I don't know, like a structure underneath it so that they, the way that they might lay on the building or just how they're adhered, gives it, even though they might be changed out, maybe gives it more of a sense of permanence or deliberate or it's more of a, um, important design.
Like a frame, like doing it in a frame type of like it's a, it's a piece of artwork hanging on the building is kind of what.
I'm just, I mean, I wouldn't know the different techniques and how, I'm assuming that this is going to be mentioned. You are putting it on some walls that are not very smooth and you're going to have, you know, it's going to look very impermanent.
Correct.
When I look at that west facade entrance, there's an elegance about it. You know, the sc- the proposed sculpture that you might have at one point and just that it's this connector entrance that really has a beautiful formality to it. And I'm just wondering that that one there and then maybe the one on Mount Vernon, maybe there's a way that even if they're changed out, that they do look more like intentional, permanent, um, design element for the, for the building. It's just a thought. Because you do have all the banners and especially if you continue the banners down where you start your mural, which I do now see that that is important to activate the street, that maybe this has just the quality of the material or the way it's laying has a little bit different feeling to it, like a different texture, a different feeling.
Yeah.
So it's just a thought because I think that it is important identification for, for the building and almost is almost like a little art piece like the sculpture would be.
Okay.
I guess what I'd say though is you've maintained the building though, the way it is. In other words, instead of taking something and putting it over the building, you're sticking out almost like a blank kind of sign, which, which I like that building. I mean, I think it's a great building.
Yeah.
So at any rate, you, you can chew on that a little bit.
If you could go back to that.
You've done that building, did you?
Yeah. Fifteen, yeah, we leased it.
Oh, like the drawing, sorry.
Yeah. I've had that building about like this.
Yeah.
So, uh, when we filled in that garage door, the picture with the graphic on it, we filled that in and framed it with Ephes and, and actually built a frame around it. So that pan, that fabric panel is in a.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
I couldn't see that. I couldn't really tell. So it's, you're saying it's within there.
Yeah.
It will be sitting within there.
Yes.
And, okay, I think that's a good idea.
And that thing replaces a garage, what was a garage door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments? Anything from anybody? Thoughts?
Move approval.
Okay, and you, and there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Trudy. Um, Belkus, you've made a comment about respecting the, the brick or something. And I guess what I, all I would say, did you, it was in your comments from the city?
Oh, yeah, our, um, yeah.
I don't see that you're tearing anything up and I assume you'll be careful about how screw holes and so on go into the old bricks.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think as far as I'm concerned, we've said enough and they're aware of that. What, I, I don't know that we need to include that in any kind of a, um, motion. Any other questions, comments, anything from the audience? Anything from this group? Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's a motion carries, it's approved as is. Great, well, I, I think it's, this is going to be fun.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you all.
Thanks for bringing it in.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next case.
All right, so this next one is also a graphics application. Um, and this is for an updated ad mural location. So this is for one fifty North Third Street, which is located just south of the Third Street and Spring Street intersection on the building's north facade wall. The applicant is seeking commission approval to update the orientation of the existing ad mural going from a vertical oriented ad mural, which covers four windows, to a horizontally oriented one that covers two windows. And this is to accommodate for a newly constructed building like right next door. The ad mural is proposed to be thirty-six feet wide by ten and a half feet tall and will be mounted using anchored brackets to sit slightly in front of the existing downspout. The applicant is also seeking commission approval for a KeyBank commercial copy installation as shown, where the total text area would be thirteen point eight percent. Um, and submitted materials include an overhead site plan, historical site photo, renderings, graphic details and an engineering letter and report. And to look at those materials real quick, this is the location, um, right here on this wall. There's a newly constructed building here and so that's why they're updating the orientation. So this is what was. Um, and now there's a building, a budding, so they wanted to change orientation to, uh, what is highlighted in yellow. And so we can see the new building here and then the proposed, uh, new orientation there. I think this is another, oh, and then this is just the, um, proposed commercial copy for the first iteration of the ad mural. And then down here is just the engineer report talking about how it will be mounted to the structure. And then this is just noting that the text size will be no larger than fifteen percent of the total area, so it is consistent. Um, and typically this is something I would easily staff approve, but I just want to bring the whole context of everything before you, just so you understand, um, you know, the reorientation. Thank you.
Would you show us the two, uh, picture panels there again for a second? It looked, because it looked to me like when they get down to the actual banner they're looking for, it looks bigger. That, okay, now the one below that. Is that the same size? The one below.
Oh, yeah, this, this.
You know what's happening? The, the, the proportions are different. So if you look where the banner ends on the left side.
Okay.
And where, if you look where the banner ends on the bottom side, those are a little different on here.
That's right.
Let me see the top one again.
Yeah. There's that one.
Oh, it's a lot deeper.
Maybe it's deeper, yeah.
Yeah.
Is, okay, wha- what, I'll tell you what the applicant can tell us, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, good, good morning. You're the applicant, I assume. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Tim Keaton with Outfront Media.
With, say again?
Outfront Media.
Great. And could you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Join us and feel free to use that microphone there. Okay, so tell us, do these, are those the same size that we're seeing in the?
They're not.
Okay.
I apologize for that. Uh, there are a person who had turned that in. You can clearly see there's a, um, uh, the fire escape that we can't go past right there, if you can zoom in on that or not. But the correct size is what's outlined by the, our engineer. He, that was put on there. Uh, that is the correct dimensions.
So when you, when we see.
It is, because it says it's ten foot six and that's got to be more than ten foot six on that building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's a floor and a half.
That's, oh, well, that's what they scaled. That was.
Look at that, see, that's above the window here. Go back, Belkus, get us.
Go back here, okay.
There we go. See, that just goes down to that little water table line and above the fourth floor, whatever it is.
This is what you're asking for, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, that's ultimately what it will look like, yeah.
Copy, let me zoom into that.
Do you have the dimensions on this, the sign that you want to put up then?
The size of the sign, yes, that we do want to put up is ten and a half feet.
This one here?
By thirty-six, correct.
Okay, so the drawing where it was outlining it on the building is probably over.
I think that drawing is wrong.
Demonstrating.
We're going to have to get that, yeah.
Yeah, this is about the mounting, so.
But that makes sense because that would be about one floor worth of.
Yes. So how about the length of it then? That looks long to me. Is that the same length as, that they had asked for in the request, you think?
No, I think it is because it goes from the, the, after the first bay is there.
And how many, that's thirty-six feet?
It goes up to the fire escape.
Yeah, so maybe we're looking for something more like ten feet by thirty-six, is that what?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. So I.
What's the use of that floor in the building?
That is the, the first uses a second, there's a second bedroom. And then there's a one, um, uh, I think a studio at the, on the other window.
So what it, what are you covering? What room is it?
That would be a studio apartment and then a second bedroom of a two-bedroom apartment.
So you're covering two windows?
There's two windows. There were four windows that were covered.
Okay.
That ban- banner has some transparency to it.
It does. It's a vinyl mesh, um, sixty percent, I think, sixty, forty with light. It, it does allow light to it. It's not exactly.
And it can come off too, it's.
And it, yeah, replaceable.
I, you know.
Questions coming?
Approve. We don't approve the content, right, anymore on these admirals. But we do approve whether or not it's an appropriate location. And admirals were intended to cover up blank walls or enliven, you know, areas of the city that are not enlivened. Now we have a building up against there like we want, right, in the downtown. I'm not sure this is an appropriate place for an admiral. And I certainly don't like the idea of covering up windows in occupied spaces.
I, I agree with that. I also feel that because of the shape of it, it looks to me like when you just look at it, it looks like a billboard because of the proportions. So when you look at it before, you would really be able to analyze and say, no, this is adhered to the side of the building. It really looks like, oh, that's some type of an, um, billboard that's sitting, you know, maybe on top of a building or something. So I think the proportions now because you're accommodating what's in front of it are unfortunate and don't read like as a banner that's enlivening anything. It reads more like, you know, a traditional billboard.
Right, that's the, that's the.
That's before.
Yeah, this is the issue.
And then.
That covered.
Yeah, but it, that went on there when there was nothing, there was nothing in that building then.
The owner of the building?
Exactly.
Uh, yes.
I don't see a problem with it. But, I mean, this is what you're seeing across the country. And if you say there is visibility that comes through, um, that particular, uh, graphic and there's approval by the landlord to have that there because of the new building that was there that now, you know, longer peasants can monetize. So, I mean, I understand that we're looking, we're seeing other graphics that are going down the street that are vertical. This one is horizontal. And as you said, there is light that is coming through the window, so I don't necessarily see where there is an issue from what we're seeing as we're going down. I believe this is Third.
Third Street, yeah. Okay.
In my experience, um, if the owner approves it, um, then it's okay. But I, from an owner perspective, when we've done that, we have, um, the person that lives there or the office that is, you know, impacting. And if they're renting that, we've done some kind of discount, but it really boiled down to what the owner, uh, wanted to do with their building. But a resident, they're okay with it. They get a couple of hundred dollars off their rent, three hundred, just to have this, this stream. Most of them will take it. So I just want to put that out.
Okay. Other questions, comment, anything from the audience? What's the pleasure of the group? I think what we, I will ask everybody to do is put a motion on the floor and then if you don't like it, you can vote against it. So we'll.
I move approval.
Is that a residential or for a business building?
Those are apartments.
Apartments.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so there's a motion.
Approval of the ad mural, uh, that fits within the space between the, um, white cornice and the white trim line, beyond the first bay and over to the fire escape, whatever those dimensions are. Okay, it's within the architectural framework.
Is there a second for that and we'll? Is there a second for that and we'll put it on the floor and then we'll talk about it? Okay, so the motion is on the floor. Questions or comments again?
Well, I mean, I understand what everybody's saying, and I think it's a really good point, you know, what um Trudy is saying and Sonya's saying. But I also feel like just looking at it in terms of design and we always look at each one individually and see how does that look in the context of the building? And I just think this is, this just doesn't enhance anything. And I know it's an issue now of, you know, they've have, like, look how attractive that looks without it. And I just feel it's a mistake here. So um that's just how I feel, because I think each one has to be looked at individually to see how it um contributes. So that's just my, coming at it from a different point of view.
Okay. Other questions, other comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess, you know, if we were starting from scratch, I'm not sure if I would support it or not, but since they already have this use on the building, I think I could probably support it. I would just, I would want to hold it back from that corner architectural piece a little bit, Bob. Just, I, I don't know, something about like the banner budding up against stonework.
Well, there's a, but there's a break there.
But is that true? Is there really a break or is it, is it flat?
There's a, probably a three or four inch recess.
Could we just hold the banner back twenty four inches so that it lets that cornice breathe? Is that too finicky of a request?
Be whatever you want.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying what I would do. I would like to frame.
Thank you, Bob.
Let the wall of the mason and he frame that thing a little bit rather than it budding tight. I think it just looks sort of clumsy, butted up tight to the stonework. That's just my opinion. I don't, you know.
I agree, I actually agree with that. I think it would look better.
Yeah, I, I think that once we have the way the mounting system works, that you're naturally gonna have a probably a, almost a foot to I don't, eight, eight inches to a foot of distance anyways, just because of the brackets that go in and the way that it attaches. So there is gonna be a little bit of distance. We could expand it a little.
Can you commit to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna do eight inches anyway, why not give it to, like, go back to the um image, please, Belkus. So you can see like over by the, that window that's exposed on the left, there's like a twenty four inch brick reveal. I know I'm beating a detail to death here, bear with me. I think it would be appropriate to do that on that side too.
It works.
Okay, and you can live with that. Okay, so can we say that the?
Modify the.
Motion.
Motion to create a twenty four inch order on the right hand side.
And Trudy, you seconded, I think, didn't you? Is that okay with you? Okay, so that motion has been modified on there then, Belkus. How, how do we do this? Will you get the dimensions, this new, the new dimensions to Belkus then, so she can, okay? Okay, so there is a motion then to do this. I'm gonna ask for the question here in a second. Anybody else? Any questions or comments? Did Tony leave us? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Raise your hands, please. Okay, and those opposed? So it looks like it's four to two, Belkus.
Does pass.
So it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't like it either, but I think it's a, it's a pretty existing kind of thing, so I don't know. Okay, next, are we done? Any other cases here? We must be because we're, I'm sorry, we're not.
Okay.
Oh, the jail's here. Oh my, okay, everybody be polite then here.
Okay.
This is gonna be another interesting discussion.
Let me. Come on, Adobe.
I'll tell you what, while you reviewed this.
Okay, so this is for three seventy South Front Street, which is located at the southeast corner of South Front and West Mound Streets and is the former location of the Franklin, are you leaving?
He's coming back.
Oh, okay. Okay, and is the former location of the Franklin County Corrections Center One Building, otherwise known as the Downtown Jail, which was constructed in, oh my gosh, in nineteen sixty nine. The applicant is seeking commission approval to demolish the building, grade and cede the lot, and provide ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the lot. This will allow for intended future redevelopment of the site for mixed, for a mixed use building, including the Franklin County Early Learning Center and streetscape and public space improvements along Mound Street. The Franklin County Board of Commissioners will prepare a HABSLITE report submitted to the Planning Division to document the existing structure. The applicant outlines a three-phase approach to the project, so phase one will be between February twenty twenty six and February twenty twenty seven. And that's the proposed demolition of the jail building and selective demolition of a portion of the Franklin County Government Center Pavilion due to the connectivity between the two buildings. And then post demolition, the site will be backfilled, graded, and seeded to establish a grass lawn. Phase two is February of twenty twenty seven to December of that year. And that's the streetscape and public space improvements along the south side of Main Street um and the north side of Mound Street. This phase will also include the reconstruction of portions of the Franklin County Government Center Pavilion and concourse that are proposed to be selectively demolished as a part of phase one. And then the last phase, phase three, which is a to be determined date, will be construction of the future mixed use building, including the Early Learning Center. The applicant was last before the commission for a conceptual review in October twenty twenty five, where the commission recommended that the applicant provide a detailed project schedule and encourage the provision of a HABSLITE report to planning staff before demolition, as well as any schematic designs of the Early Learning Center. The commission also noted that key historic downtown fabric will not be lost as the current structure is tucked back behind the main court buildings. In response to commission feedback, the applicant provided added details to the project schedule and concept drawings for the streetscape improvements and Franklin County Government Center building updates. Submitted materials include a parcel map, proposed project description, proposed project schedule, existing site photos, overall site plan noting the proposed demolition limits and perimeter, and perimeter fence, existing site conditions plan, overall building demolition and protection plan, proposed site grading plan, streetscape improvement concept drawings, and Franklin County Government Center building update concept drawings. Um, in looking at those, um, again, this is the project description um with some added detail included. Uh, this is new, this is the detailed project schedule that they included. Um, we have the photo log that we saw last time. There are a few new photos included. And then this is the overall site plan. Um, I don't know why it's doing that. Okay, well, maybe we'll revisit these when. Oh, well, we'll come back to these. Maybe it takes a second, I can reload it. But overall, the downtown design guidelines state that the downtown district code requires a certificate of appropriateness for demolitions and that a replacement use or plan be approved by the downtown commission. The guidelines note that maximizing the investment potential of a given site is encouraged, but so is preservation of existing building stock. The guidelines encourage the commission to consider if demolition would allow for new development, which in their opinion is of greater significance to the character of surrounding area. And the applicant is, the application is up for consideration by the downtown commission who need to make those considerations, which I just listed. Thank you.
All right, very good. Could the applicants come up, please? Morning. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, Chris Long, Franklin County Deputy County Administrator.
Okay.
Steve Winters with DLZ.
And are you going to join us in the conversation or?
Yeah, if there's questions, Joe Kyle, uh, architect.
Great. Could you raise your right hands? Do you swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Okay. We looked at this, was it last month or so? So as you understand, this is out of our, uh, standard procedure here. Um, today you're just asking for a straight demolition permit.
That's correct.
Okay, so just as a couple of preliminary questions. Are you set and determined that you will proceed with a new building on this site?
Yes.
And is that, you have the money available to do that?
We do.
There a commitment to do that?
There is.
In what form?
Uh, there is a commitment by the three county commissioners uh to advance this priority for the Early Learning Center. We are knee deep in the design phase, and so hence we're not able to provide the um uh schematic design for you as yet. Um, and it does take some time to ensure that we have the correct um design on that site. It is going to take some time for us to go through the process. Um, but it is also going to take some time to go through the demolition as well because of the type of building, which is why we're um, to your point, uh, Mr. Chairman, somewhat unusual to come forward with the demolition before we have the full design done, but because of the timeframe for the demolition of the jail and it is, is past its useful life, it cannot be used any longer for that purpose. That is why we are in front of you today.
Well, the one thing that just stuck out, I thought it was very interesting um to me at the last meeting, the last hearing with you folks was what was involved with the demolition in this thing. I mean, I don't know that I've heard of um, something quite that involved. Um, and I get that. To me, that is a very, very large circumstance, extenuating circumstance.
Three inch gap at the other project.
Right, right. And um, I think, tell us again, I think, uh, what did you say? It's gonna take quite a while to actually do the demolition. Is that right? Do you have a projected timeline on that one?
Yes, we're actually estimating it to be a twelve month duration period. That will include all the, the remaining abatement that needs to be done prior to the demo. And then um the demolition of the jail and the selective demolition of the roof portion of the concourse.
Is this approval um also rebuilding the, the, the concourse or is this just demolition?
The, the first phase that we've come to before today is for phase one, which is just the demolition. The, we are actually um starting design on phase two, which will be the streetscape improvements as well as the reconstruction of the concourse uh pavilion roof and and, and front. We brought a few conceptual drawings that um kind of identify what the, the initial concept is for, but they haven't been carried through schematics yet.
So is it your intent to proceed with those then while the demolition is occurring?
Yeah, design will.
So you're actually going to start those elements?
The design will be um.
Even before you begin construction on the new building?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We've got to restore the functionality of the, of the pavilion and concourse area. Um, front and center. Um, as, as part of the project, the security checkpoint that leads into the pavilion will be relocated. Once we're done with demolition and re, rebuild the concourse roof, the security checkpoint will be reestablished back to its original location.
And you did not have the drawings on that then either, the redo of the pavilion?
Uh, we've, we've brought some conceptual drawings.
Okay.
But I, we will um, we'll come back to the, the commission, obviously, with the COA application request and that. The intent is for that to start right after demo. Um, the streetscapes, if it works out right, may overlap a little bit. Um, schedule wise, uh, just depends how everything falls out, but.
Uh, and members of the commission, uh, two other items. Part of the demolition is also the decoupling of all of the utilities that go through that building. So that is also part of the process um that will take some time to ensure that connectivity remains. And second, in terms of the design, um, as, as current, as literally today, we have staff members who are in uh, other portions of the state looking at other early learning facilities as part of our design team. So we are absolutely active in the design process of what that uh will look like.
Yeah.
Quest, just two comments that I know that, you know, these would affect phase two and they're not affecting what we're doing today, but just in looking at your package, I wanted to mention. So it looks like where you're reconstructing the west face on the first floor of the Dorian Building and maybe the side of the pavil, a little bit of the pavilion, it looks like you're using EFIS product to do that. And I'm just wondering that as you decide how that early child learning center is going to interface with these existing buildings, you might want to consider maybe a different material. Um, because that might become more of um, you know, an entry point or something with a, with more traffic or something where, you know, you want to use a more substantial material or higher grade material. So it's just something I think is.
Cut to the chase, maybe brick?
Yeah, you just, as you just. It might be something to think about what that material will be.
Currently, we're looking at. Currently, what we're looking at.
Bring another chair up. Bring another chair up, guys.
Really, what we're, what we're looking at is the new building kind of coming in right on top of that, that guy building. So we have to kind of look at the structure and we're trying to like coordinate the structural elements. And then that will then, that siding, that, that, that is only, really only temporary for the moment.
I see.
Because the building's gonna be right on top of that, so we'll pull that away. And then it'll come, it'll be a part of the building. You won't really notice.
I wasn't sure if it was going to be that the learning center was offset and there was a courtyard created or was an entry, so that's good to know. And then in the plaza area, I know it's probably just schematic, but where you're changing where the sculpture is and you see you have like the sculpture and the little grass area. I, I'm just gonna get up and show you something that I was thinking. It looks like you're creating, you know, a zone here. And we have some, we have like this white script here that you created.
Yeah.
If this landscape is very small, I consider maybe making it elongated and taking the sculpture and offsetting it, so you should create a little more of a green space and that would put more of that seating out and then, I don't know.
Are we approving this today and all this stuff too?
Like a little seating area?
But I was just thinking about this, and this is so much more space, that maybe there's an opportunity.
To kind of soften it.
It's a plaza, it's an entrance to a huge complex.
Right. One of the things that we're gonna, we're, we're kind of in right now is we, we are kind of starting that process of kind of revising some of those things and kind of working out the details and kind of finalizing what's gonna happen. So I do see a little bit of evolution at that location as well. Uh, one of the things we're gonna have to do is as we move that, you know, we're actually kind of, that sculpture is gonna be shifted from where it originally was to kind of where it is on the corner to make it a little bit more of an in, interest to it. And so as we kind of begin to do that, we're gonna have to most likely dig out that area. And so I think that's gonna potentially, I mean, I think you're kind of right. We might have to potentially grow it just a little bit just to kind of get the soils up and make it kind of strength, kind of support that location. But we can definitely look into that.
Just make, kind of make the design a little more dynamic.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, but it's famous.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I don't understand what you're doing north of the pavilion. It looks like you ripped out all of the art scape and design there and put grass or something back. What's happening there?
Slope there, isn't it? Quite a bit of a slope.
I think what I'm reading is you're, you've removed all the stairs to replace it with landscape, is that right? Yeah, and then you can kind of begin to see like a little bit of a switchback as well. Uh, we're softening that, softening up that side, but we're also kind of making sure that it's not an area where people are like laying out or people aren't, you know, kind of congregating in there, but it's visually appealing. You can see the vertical elements of the trees in space. You can kind of begin to see the soft, the softness of, of the materials that we're trying to use, but we will kind of try to revitalize that a little bit.
And that's, that's where a lot of the incline, isn't there a lot of the?
There is a little bit of an incline, yeah.
Oh, well, that can be a, um, I, I guess to, uh, to Jana's point, I think, um, I, I think what I would love to see on this, I think this is a really important part of the downtown Columbus, this kind of courthouse square, and I think we've, you know, we're getting, one building is going away that frankly is not one of the world's great buildings. We've got a courthouse that I think is a pretty well done thing. I, I'd like to see us move towards really doing this well. And, and um, when we first got onto the courthouse, I made the comment to one of the judges that came in to see me that we should be doing hundred year buildings in this, in this town. They, he, they were coming in and they were taking down a building that had been there for twenty five years. To me, that is outrageously wasteful. Uh, it's terrible. Now, I understand, I mean, it was, it was everything else. The, the, the design was bad. They had the asbestos and it kind of went on and on and on and on, so we had to do it, but still, we should be moving towards doing very high quality, both design wise and material wise. Um, the uh buildings here when we do it. And I know. And I know everybody, everybody's under a budget constraint, I get that. But still, I think this is the kind of thing, I think, I'd love to see, when you come back on this kind of thing, really see some high-quality stuff. So with respect to EFAS, that, you know, we can, we can do better than that in this town.
And that's only temporary.
I want to make another real quick comment about my view of this thing with respect to our policy, which is what we, what we try to do is we don't want buildings torn down because we don't want somebody to, we don't want to end up with a hole, okay? I, in a way, don't see that as being the case here. I think two things, one is I think it's all part of this complex. I think it's shut down, and everybody will tell you their building is not usable. I mean, they'll come in and, you know, it's, you know, it's, just you can't possibly rehab it. And so we have to deal with that. I get it in this case, it's a totally different use, and I think the use easily qualifies for something better in this area there, your idea. So I, from my standpoint, I really don't feel uncomfortable with the idea of proceeding. And then this whole idea of how long it's going to take you and how involved that is. And I would hate to have go through this dance where we want to hold you up, and then you come back in with your final stuff, and then we've, we've just put ourselves a year behind. And I don't think that gets anybody anything, so that's just my personal thought on this.
The advisory committee, the frac, when we have presentations particularly around delivery rate, the county basically came out and talked about the early learning center. Place next to the county courthouse because it's an economic development driver as well as a workforce adoption requirement. And they're also looking at this being a prototype that they're going to do across Franklin County. But this is their first effort. And so, like you said, I'm not, I know that our policy usually is if we don't have something in front of us, as far as being able to, what's going to go in place, what we're demolishing. But there is a commitment by the county commissioners to move forward on this. So that's why I'm very confident and very comfortable with moving forward with it.
I agree, I'm usually the first one to say we're not going to approve demolition without a plan, but I'm very familiar with how complicated that connection is between the jail and the Dorian Building and the connector and the utilities and all of those things. So I think, and this is not, it's not some developer that's come to town from somewhere else that says I'm going to do something and then goes away, it's the county. So I don't have any lack of confidence that it's going to happen. I do have concerns about the conceptual designs we're seeing for the outside spaces. And I really think that before you go any further with this corner, you should look at all three corners and see how they relate to one another. Because a lot of thought was given to, to that when the pavilion and the courthouse were built. And I, I see that sort of deteriorating in these, what I'm seeing here.
I think that's a very good idea.
Not saying you have to keep exactly what's there, but I am saying, don't, even if it's not in your scope, show us what's around it and how these improvements to the plazas will enhance the courthouse square.
And that, you're including in that thought, the southeast corner as well.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Common Please Court building, you have improvements for that too, that you had in your package. So that is, you know, that works together. So that would be when you would come back for Phase Two and developing that, those would go hand in hand, and you'd be developing those together, is that?
Yes, the county owns the property on the northwest and the southeast, southwest portion. So Common Please and the pavilion entrance. And Commissioner, to your point as well, would be happy to take a look at that. We're really proud of wanting to have a world-class downtown city and county court complex. That was one of the reasons the commissioners sold the county property on the east side of High Street to the city so that the municipal courthouse, the new municipal courthouse could stay downtown and be connected. And so while that is currently in design, I think your point is really well-taken. We want to be in active conversation, and we are, but detailed active conversation to make sure that that corner, mound and high, does flow well together and is something the community can be proud of.
And I think what, we'd love to see that along the way. And, you know, sometimes the best way to do that is see it up in front a little bit. You're, it obviously conceptually, and it's subject to change. But I think that'd make me feel better and maybe all of us. And then as we go, we're all kind of on the same page.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Happy to do it.
If you could do that, that'd be good, and whenever you're ready to show us something, it'd be good.
And also, I think mound street, you know, years ago, it wasn't the main artery onto 70 and all of that interchange, but now it's functioning differently. So when you approach this courthouse square and you have a lot of pedestrians, you want to kind of signal that there's something happening here and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. It seems you have already created some type of pavement square, but maybe looking at that too and seeing how that interacts and connects with what you're doing on the, on the two sites or on all four sites, well, three, three corners, yes.
Okay, good. Any other thoughts here, questions, comments? Anything from the audience? Could I ask for a motion then, please, or what's your thought here proceeding?
I move approval.
I didn't want to proceed, there's a motion to approve, is there a second, please? Trudy, thank you, motion's on the floor. Questions, comments, anybody?
The fence.
The, the motion is to approve the app or the request, which is for demolition.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I had a question about the fencing. So the area, because of the demolition of the jail building, you're going to have that whole area that eventually becomes the seated area, Phase Two fenced. And will that have some type of, you know how sometimes you have those fences and there's some type of wrap that explains what's coming next? How will the fence look? And you also talk about a Jersey barrier, and where will, where will that be?
I'll defer to my architect colleagues here in just a moment. But once the, if there is that pause before the design is done and the early learning center is constructed, once that is landscaped, the fence will no longer be there. So I wanted to make that clear, that is not going to be, I don't think it was as clear as I could have been last month. But during the construction process, I'll defer to my colleagues to talk further about your particular question.
Thank you. So, yeah, there's, there's going to be the concrete Jersey barrier on Front Street and Mound. And then when you get up to the corner of mound and high, you can kind of see where the arrow is pointing there, and the symbol changes a little bit. It'll be a water-filled Jersey barrier with the fence on it. That will be put in place prior to demo, and then it will remain in place until the completion of demo, at which point then we will pull it in and restrict the sidewalks because the sidewalks will be closed as part of the Phase Two work. And then once Phase Two is completed, then as sections are done, and then we can open it back up with our maintenance of traffic and pedestrian traffic plan, we'll open them back up. But the intent is to remove all the fencing, as Chris indicated, at the completion of the project. There will be a windscreen and probably some scrib on, on that as well. What, what it says, we haven't determined yet.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So two more things on the agenda. One is motioning for the staff approved applications into the record, and then we can pick the Harrison Smith Award and look at the list for that.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the staff approvals, please? Is there a second? Thank you. Any questions or comments? I thought I had one, scroll down just a little bit more there. And I can't remember what it was, I might have to call you later. Okay, I can't remember.
You want to, you can call me.
I'll call you back, yeah, if I think of it. Okay, good. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, those are approved, Belkus, thank you.
All right. So Harrison Smith Awards, Adam's doing a wonderful job coordinating this whole process. And he put together this list. So as a reminder, last year, Topry Park was the winner. And this year, we have a few options. One is Preston Center. Again, this is a great example of office to residential conversion, adding some mixed use on the site as well with the restaurant and the sunken garden. This was completed in 2023 with Edwards Companies. Adam put this nice before image here, and then we have the after. So it's option one. Option two is a library park development, so this is residential, 145 units by Pazuti. This opened in 2022. And again, we, and this is near the library. So again, we have that before, a lot of surface parking, good infill opportunity, and then the after there. Next, we have the Madison redevelopment, so this is corner of high and gay. I think it's almost finished, but we have 44 units there by Edwards, open in 2024. Good example of that mixed use with retail on the first floor and then residential above. So this is what it was beforehand. And then now, just that enhanced development. Last, we have the Nicholas Apartments, this is actually across the street. So it's mixed use with 230 units also by Edwards, open in 2019. A lot of retail along the first floor, you know, some larger national tenants, but then also hosting a lot of our ground floor growth, small business shops as well. So again, big, lot of surface parking here as well, and then having that infilled. So those.
Don't we usually approve things or select things that were completed like this year?
No. Typically, it's just a project that's been completed.
Recently, at least.
Recently, it doesn't have to be this year. I don't know. I don't know that any significant projects have been completed this year in 2025. There's a lot that's been started, there's a lot that's being worked on. But, yeah, it's typically just a recent project.
I can check on that.
Yeah, I can check on it. That's how I was trained by Lewis, but I'll double check.
What's everybody think, what's, what jumps out at you?
Can I just make a?
Absolutely, okay.
I was gonna, I'm sorry if I'm jumping all over everyone. I think this is sort of focused on buildings alone, and I would put Madison and the Nicholas together as two things that really contribute to improving downtown.
A space, yeah.
And High Street, which has been overlooked maybe since the Nationwide Tower got built in whatever year that was. So, you know, if I had to pick, I'd really struggle. There's, these are all really amazing projects, but I think Madison's and Nicholas together are, you know, doing something for the High Street corridor.
Yeah.
That hasn't been done in a long time, so I just wanted to offer that.
And Madison's is not totally done yet, is it?
Yeah.
Or at least the big.
Almost there, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that high-rise building's nowhere near done.
Pardon? Yeah.
You, you see no one. And now you see everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there, so I agree that the two should be combined because they're not separate.
Yeah, and architecturally, I think they're, they're composed of bits and pieces. It's more about the sum of the parts, right?
Okay.
I think it's the whole intersection. I would include the Citizens Building and the little white bank, it'll be that whole.
As a recognition of this work.
The sculpture, that whole thing together is an amazing thing.
Yeah, the sculpture was the 2022 winner, or 2020.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, 2023 winner, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Last year was Topry Park, the year before that was undercurrent.
Yeah, I think art is great, I love it, no complaints about that. But the way these buildings contribute to adding people to the neighborhood and activating the street is amazing, given how hard it's been to do anything on High Street.
Oh, I know, I went to dinner there recently, and like every restaurant's full.
I relocated here, I lived in a citizen, and it was during COVID. And I remember looking out my window, I had that corner unit, and that was a eyesore, Madison that corner. And I was asking around, like, what's going to happen, what's going on there? And I did get privy to what was going to happen, and now I regret not buying a condo. So the sea is so dynamic now, and it's just been a transformation in five years, that entire.
Now, if you want to talk about timeline though, the, the Citizens Building was done some time ago. So the recent current done or almost done is Nicholas and Madison.
Even Nicholas is not, I mean, 2019 is quite a while back, as it turns out. So I think that, I think we could talk about the ongoing, because it isn't quite finished, redevelopment of that.
I'm not troubled by, I'm not particularly troubled by saying it has to be immediately done.
And we, you know, I think you could say that the Citizens Building doesn't really come into its own until the rest of this happens, right? It all, it's all, and we've had multiple buildings and multiple owners before. I mean, it doesn't have to be a building, okay?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I came in wanting the Preston, but I think what everybody's saying here, this is the real spirit of the awards, this is so contributory, so important.
Transformation, yeah.
And I couldn't agree more with what you are saying, so this is my vote too, and combining them, like you said.
Okay. So I'm, I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing one option is just the buildings at the corner of Gay and High as, as a whole, the four. But I'm also hearing that just leaving it to the Nichols and the Madison redevelopment, but combining them. So which option would we like? I think, you know, the world's our oyster, so we can pick whatever we'd like here. Do you want to do the four, or do we want to limit it to the Nichols and the most recent, I guess, which is Nichols and Madison?
Nicholas, yeah.
I wouldn't, I don't think we should limit it, I think it's the whole.
Intersection.
Whole intersection.
And it's like a 10-year renovation of that intersection, right? Or so, yeah. I think recognizing, you know, the Edwards Company and everything that they've done there and like how much.
I think they view, he views it that way a little bit too, is the idea that you don't just go in and do a building.
Yeah, right.
Idea was, the opportunity was to do certain, a bunch of several different ones.
Create energy.
Exactly, and create a, a place.
Area right there.
Yeah.
Restaurants, you know, apartments, condos.
What you could, what you could do is just call it the intersection of Gay and High.
I was just seeing Gay and High redevelopment. And then looking at, you know.
That I think could be.
Acknowledging Edwards Companies, but then also the architects, landscape, you know, everybody that's been involved in those, in that node of redevelopment. Does that work for everybody?
The city played a role.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm in favor of that too, I like that a lot.
Okay.
I will say though, looking at some of these other ones, I think that, that front of that 155 East Broad Street building, the.
Oh, the Preston Center?
Oh my gosh, I think that's just fantastic. Getting rid of that, that black box in front, which I didn't get, and the sunken garden.
The only issue that I have with, and it's not a design issue, I think it's fabulous, but it's not open to the public.
What's not open to the public?
It's the sunken garden.
I called yesterday to ask, you know, because I wasn't sure, and they said it isn't. So that really.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Influenced me a little bit to think I don't.
I mean, you could look at it.
You can sure look at it, yeah.
Still, it's such an interesting example on how, you know, when it was built, there was one philosophy.
And the front of the building.
Through the years, how it changed and how it became.
And I will say, I think there's, that Pazuti thing there at Library Park is fantastic.
Amazing building, and the ground floor experience is really great.
The whole, the whole.
The integration of public art on that building is awesome. There's, those are all really, I would vote for any of these.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've kind of come to a.
Here we are, yeah.
Everybody on board, Trudy, you feel good about it?
Okay, we'll proceed on.
Gay and high, okay, good.
Okay.
You're good?
Thank you.
Good. Okay, anything else we need to do?
That was the last item on the agenda.
Well, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too.
You.